Please take roll call.
Trustee Borninski.
Good evening.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Seegrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
And finally, Trustee Ganguly.
Good evening.
And let the record reflect that Stephen Snyderman is not here.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, today's agenda item is a study session on intersections, something that is very exciting. And Jade, if you wouldn't mind, you can introduce your team and then start your presentation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So we have with us members from our engineering staff. We have Charles LaRoe, and you all know Bill. They're here to -- we're going to go over some major intersection, and obviously Dave down there at the end, sorry, Dave Norwood. I'm going to share my screen and then we can jump right into it. I'll go through a quick intro. And I was able to just send this to you by converting it to PDF.
There it is.
Got it.
You should see it. Here we go. Okay. So, we wanted to come to you before tonight and talk about an intersection analysis that we've done recently, where all engineering has done it. As you all put together the strategic plan a few years ago, there was a strategy and an action item that was part of that strategic plan, which was to include our intersection improvements as part of our road dollar, or road projects. So that's what sparked this. And there's truly a need in the township on various intersections that need to be improved. We worked with Manikin Smith and to provide a traffic studying analysis, they studied and reviewed, and the results are as follows. And I apologize, there we go. I'm not sure why it's doing it this way. But these are the parameters that were reviewed and included in the analysis. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Charles and Bill to lead us through the rest of the discussion. It's not a very long presentation. We literally have maybe four or five more slides to talk about each intersection and how those were chosen, talk about what was suggested as recommendations for future construction and addressing the traffic at each of those intersections. Then from there, we can open up for discussion and have discussion on how we would like to move forward and for you guys to consider. So I'll turn it over to Charles and Bill.
I'll touch on the background and then Charles will walk through each of the three intersections. So, we retained Manikin Smith last spring, and we went through a series of discussions with them and analysis of three intersections. And we included Wayne County and MDOT in these discussions. We wanted to get to the end of last year with appropriate fixes for three of these intersections, and we wanted the support from Wayne County and MDOT. So we brought them along, and what you're going to see tonight have been essentially blessed by the agencies. That's key, once we get into detailed design and potentially funding. So, Manikin Smith did initial traffic analysis. We went through several alternatives for each of these intersections, Ford and Beck, Sheldon and Palmer, and then Geddes, Sheldon, and US-12, that strange intersection at the south end of township. So what you'll see has had support from both of the agencies, and that's a key. And so I'll let Charles talk about the first one, which we have on Sheldon, Geddes, and US-12 is our next slide. If you take a look at that.
Yeah, sure. So, the strange one that Bill is talking about, everyone's very familiar with this intersection. Essentially what you see here is our preferred alternative solution. The piece in red there, that what we call sort of a slip ramp from westbound Michigan Ave onto Geddes Road would be eliminated. That red strip in the middle would be a very small, sort of median, essentially to prevent eastbound travelers on Geddes from continuing through the intersection. So, moving eastbound on Geddes, you have to either go north or south onto Sheldon Road and/or the turnaround, or whatever you call that, onto Michigan Ave. This sort of alleviates some of the lockup that you would see at Sheldon and Geddes during peak travel times, because obviously you're eliminating some inbound traffic into the intersection from Michigan Ave. Westbound on Michigan Ave, you still have the option to turn north onto Sheldon. You just can't use Geddes, that piece of Geddes anymore. I apologize, up is north on that map, if anyone wasn't picking up on that. I mean, that's essentially the gist of what we want to do. We do have, you know, some data that shows the increased level of service for the intersection, or it's essentially two intersections, you know, improving through the, what's called the 2046 design year. So it's forecasted out for several decades at that point. That's kind of the gist of that one. I don't know if we want to go to the next one or talk about this one first, but...
Do you guys want to review them all and then ask questions, or go one by one? Okay.
All right, so Ford and Beck. I think north is to the...
North is to the left.
Sure. North is to the right.
That's the studio on the bottom.
So north is to the right. So this one is a bit simpler. We're essentially on Beck Road adding what will amount to a right turn lane onto Ford and extending the left turn queuing on northbound Beck. Most of the problems we saw there with modeling showed, obviously stacking, northbound on Beck and then some on southbound on Beck as well. This one in particular, we're somewhat limited in right-of-way and room we can do things with. So given the situation, that's kind of what, you know, was recommended to us as being sort of our most optimum fix for that intersection itself.
On this, if you've probably all driven it many times, you have a lot of northbound traffic. You have the schools to the north. By adding more stacking in that center turn lane, you're allowing, right now, you only have a limited amount of people that can stack to go left onto Ford. So, the people that are trying to go straight on Beck get blocked up. So by adding more stacking for those left turners, you make Beck northbound flow.
In a dedicated right turn lane on northbound Beck, obviously provides room for cars to get out of the way of those traveling north through the intersection.
So you're basically not doing anything about the left turn signal?
No, no. We would, there would be some signal changes, as far as the signal timing, but you're going to allow that northbound traffic to flow better. We did look at several other alternatives here. The other thing I would note on this, we've asked Manikin Smith to look at this project for a full design, for the southbound leg as one portion and the northbound leg as another portion. The northbound leg, heading north of Ford, is, there's a potential where we might have to rebuild that bridge. So we wanted to look at them separately. It may be that, you know, in the future, as we improve this intersection, we may end up doing one portion, the south portion first. The north portion, if we have to rebuild the bridge, is a significant effort. So, just as a note, this could be, this can be broken down into two design projects.
It will, we will, the signal will be modified once the lanes are added and the stacking has changed. There'll be some optimization for the signal that's there. Is that what you meant?
No, I mean, like, the north and south, you don't have a left turn signal?
Oh, right, right. Right. I'd have to go back and look. I know it includes signal optimizations. I don't know if it included adding a left turn signal, a dedicated left turn.
Yeah, I have to look at their analysis to see if they would. We'll look at that once we get into detailed design. But getting that northbound traffic to flow beyond the left turners is a key issue with this intersection.
That's the hard part, is north and southbound, they basically, the traffic keeps coming, so you can't turn.
Right, right.
Yeah. That's...
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
And then don't we own the land on the west side of Beck?
Northwest corner, yes. Which would be important if we did have to touch that bridge.
That bridge in Fellows Creek.
Right, and finally Sheldon and Palmer. So yeah, we found that our deal solution in this situation is a roundabout, a single lane roundabout. You know, it really frees up the eastbound Palmer Road traffic at the intersection in the afternoon, as opposed to the four-way stop, and allows the traffic to move through there a little more quickly, with very minimal right-of-way impacts. I think the location they're showing there is kind of the ideal spot that Manikin Smith landed on. The impact, I think the toughest piece was the north-west corner. There's that home right there on the corner, was trying not to impact that resident, which I think we determined, we don't need right-of-way. We may need some construction, temporary construction easement, but we don't have to impact his right-of-way at all. It'll improve the pedestrian movement around that intersection as well, with some of the sidewalk improvements.
Heck, yeah.
But it would bring the, this intersection right now essentially fails during its worst, the worst peak, so it brings that from a failing intersection to really a much higher level of wait times essentially for the travel in public. So it's nice, it's kind of neat. We're kind of excited about that one, it's a roundabout.
And we did sit in a meeting and the county said, they agreed.
They're okay with it, yeah.
I mean, we have concurrence on these from their traffic engineers, both at the county and MDOT. We looked at four or five alternatives for each of these locations. So that was sort of a stunning moment for the county to acknowledge that after many years of resistance. It's a, there's some other constraints on this location. There's a drain in the southeast corner, which we really don't want to touch. We don't want to have to enclose that. And we do have the park in the southwest corner, which gives us a little bit of flexibility. I think Charles heard me say many times to Manikin Smith, keep pushing it into our park.
And they kind of did.
Keeping it away. Well, you know, these are very preliminary, but the traffic analysis does show that they will work. You know, I certainly prefer not to encroach on residences and commercial properties versus a park, which is something we already own.
What are the dates, do you have a timeline for this one, or what do you have?
Right now, we have a proposal from Manikin Smith to go to full design on each of these. That will take about a year. We're going to have, on the two at Ford and Beck and Sheldon, Geddes, US-12, those will both go through a more detailed review. Once Manikin Smith does survey, detailed design, those will both go through geometric review with the state, because they're both affecting state highways. Sheldon and Palmer, you know, I don't know if the county's ever reviewed something like this. I'm pretty sure they have one in Northville they're looking at, but other than that, it's not a common practice. I would say both, all three of these would take at least a year to design and try to fund. That's the schedule they've laid out for us, is I would hope by the end of this year, we would be in a position to pull the trigger on one or more of them.
I think we're getting just a little bit ahead of ourselves, because we have to, we wanted to talk about that at the end, because we do have some design costs. And then working that into the five-year roads plan is going to be key for this, and making sure that we've got the budgeted dollars allocated appropriately at the right time. So if, can we come back to that after we get done with just the, we have like two slides left that we can have that, but we have some costing coming up. I'll let you interpret this, but I do think that there is an alternative, going back to Beck and Ford. It does look like they have different alternatives where they would actually have protected left turns. So, it does look like they would do a deeper traffic analysis and you would have dedicated left turns. That's my interpretation.
Yes. That's correct.
Can I, can I ask about the first one? It looks like we are kind of drastically impacting the direction or the usage of that intersection. I do understand it is quite chaotic. But under this scenario, it looks like residents or any motorist traveling east on Geddes would be required to go south as the only direction they can, they can go. So you can no longer go...
You can go into Michigan.
Yeah.
But you'd have to go south to go onto Michigan Avenue, right? So you'd have to go onto Sheldon. Right, so you can, you can either go back west, or you can go south. So anybody going east on Geddes can no longer go north. And this is one of our...
They're saying this will go like this?
One of our kind of major... I'm just thinking about like, if you want to go north, this intersection seems like it's drastically impacting any residents who kind of live on that side of Geddes, because there's no roundabout, because the...
And also anybody who wants to go west on Geddes from Michigan Avenue.
Yeah, and there's no left turn onto Geddes.
The nature of Geddes will change, right?
Yeah.
Geddes will not be as free-flowing in every direction as it was.
Yeah.
We talked about this one quite a bit. There were some other alternatives we looked at here, and this was the one that the agencies and us settled on.
You didn't like the traffic impact of allowing left turns there, or...
Just to kind of touch base too on why the intersections, these three were chosen, working with the county and also working with MDOT. This was one of MDOT's areas of concern, was this actual intersection. So when we spoke with Guretti, this was one that they were in full support of doing something to alleviate the traffic patterns out there. Just because we had this preliminary study done, doesn't mean we have to do any of it. But these are the recommendations that are coming forward from the traffic engineers, and that MDOT felt it was appropriate.
Yeah. I just, this has always been a problem intersection.
Yeah.
But, and I'm no traffic engineer, but it was always the assumption that it was a problem intersection because of motorists that were going west on Michigan Avenue, using, taking that off-ramp and then either going through Geddes, or turning left, back onto Michigan Avenue right there. So I just, I'm just kind of curious if the, to steal a phrase from Lizzo that I've been using for the last six months, if the juice is worth the squeeze on this one, because the solution is, it is pretty drastic for how it will impact motorists. I mean, and Geddes Road, not to be nerdy about this, but since, you know, 1828, was designed for people that specifically go that direction. And so this is a huge change to that road, and you're giving up a lot. And I guess you guys are convinced that it's worth it.
There are certainly some residences on the north side of Geddes. There's not a lot of subdivisions in that area, but it will affect those people. They won't have that free flow to be able to get, to be able to drive the way they are today. And I think, Jade, you're right. I mean, these are, these are the alternatives we went through, and this is the one we've come at. There may be some changes if we move forward with full design on this, but you're right, it will change the nature of traffic on Geddes, and people won't have the same options. But Geddes is actually, if you look between Geddes and Canton Center, there are, I don't know, a dozen or two houses on the north side, and then you have some commercial on the south side and the school. So it will, it will change their traffic patterns.
And potentially a new Canton Human Services Center about 150 feet from this location that would primarily be served by individuals coming from the east to receive the services from Growth Works. I just imagine a number of people might try cutting through that corner parcel to get around the median that's being proposed.
In the best-case scenario, when we talk to everybody, if there was a way to acquire that property, that's actually what MDOT would like, is to acquire that property and do something completely different there.
We also did look at, I don't know what you call it, adding a...
Okay.
Adding a road near the Star Academy down through where there's kind of some wetlands and then there's a drain that would cross over down to Michigan Ave. But that wasn't as effective safety-wise, or functionality, or cost-wise either. One of the...
So I have questions about this one also. I use that off-ramp a lot. I know, yes, it's a crazy intersection. I probably lived here for about five years before I really understood how it worked. And I had people honking at me because I left my right turn signal on, and they thought I was turning on Sheldon and all kinds of things. So I know, I'm aware of how bad that intersection is, but what I'm curious about is the traffic patterns that we have there right now. I rarely ever see someone using that off-ramp to turn onto Sheldon. They're all going through, continuing west on Geddes. Is that what the data, like, your data shows also? Because that's my anecdotal data.
You would eliminate those people that typically take that, their traffic patterns would change.
Right.
This would radically change all those people that take that right turn.
Yeah, it worries me, because, I mean, for, yeah, I understand people will eventually get used to it, but there's not going to be a good alternative other than taking Michigan Avenue, continuing west on there.
Right, so if you consider that, right, there's not a lot on Geddes between Sheldon and...
But a lot of people use Geddes to get further west, like to Beck or to Dent.
Which isn't ideal, right? You'd rather than travel on the state highway to get down to Canton Center, which is made for higher traffic volumes, it's safer, there's less pedestrian possibility in turning in and out of driveways.
Yep.
Than having them sort of take the secret route down Geddes to skip past Michigan Ave. I think to your point, it's a very old road. It's not intended for the, that amount of traffic that we probably put on it now.
Yeah, I guess I would be interested in if there's any alternatives.
I wonder around about a small city.
I don't, would that even help?
I won't consider that a small one, because it's on, it's on an interstate.
Yeah.
It's on Michigan Avenue. Acquiring that property, this would take, you have to acquire that property.
Which property are we talking about?
The former bank?
The former bank, which is the one down that building you see there to the...
The southwest corner?
Yes, yeah. It's an investment firm now, I believe.
So I have a question. Do we have any, I guess, accident data? Because I see a lot of people who get to that intersection who have no idea what to do. And they block the intersection, and people turn when they're not supposed to turn, and it just seems like it's a headache, especially for people who may not be from Canton, who are coming into Canton and are not used to...
Yeah. No, it took me a long time to get it.
Who are not used to the craziness that is that intersection. So I'd be interested to see what, like, if there's any traffic accident data. And also, traffic patterns change. We change things. We're a community that's growing. We have almost 100,000 people now. If we need to change some roads, we need to change some roads. I'm not, I mean, I guess I don't...
So part of what they analyze is the future traffic, future traffic use from data we get from SEMCOG, and that's why they can predict out the 2046, you know, the estimated level of service. And I was going to say earlier, a lot of, one of the main things they look at when analyzing an intersection is safety. And that includes traffic lockup, you know, left turn accidents, you know, accidents at the intersection, and it's alleviates a lot of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with Sommers, that, you know, we had changed when, when we did the Sheldon Center, that area, years ago. It totally changed that part. So, something, something like that. I understand that. And it impacts and impacts people between Sheldon and Canton Center Road on Geddes Road. If they have to go around, they go around, go to Canton Center and take a right to Geddes Road, so.
Yeah, my concern is that people are going to try and go around that.
Yep.
Whereas, I mean, SEMCOG does a traffic...
Under this scenario, if I'm going to the Western Wayne Narcotics Building from Wayne or Westland, I'm going to have to go one half-mile from Sheldon all the way down to Canton Center, go down a quarter-mile Canton, from Michigan Avenue to Geddes, then go down another half-mile from Canton Center all the way down to the Canton Human Services Building. You've just taken me at 1.15 miles out of my way because of the way you've designed an intersection. And it could be safer, and that's, that's fine, but the changes to Sheldon Center Road were, that's 100 yards. This is potentially 1.0, this is over a mile redirection out of my way.
Then it would just be the way, if we do this.
It would just be the way.
Yeah. Are you talking about the old DPW building, is where?
Yeah, the old DPW building.
If you're coming from the, from the east, you're saying you'd have to go down to Michigan Ave, up Canton Center, and then over to Geddes?
Go back, yeah. Or what I would probably do, if I were routinely, if I did that three times, I would probably then start just cutting through the Hans Group's parking lot.
Which one?
The parcel you want to buy.
The old bank. Well, that was...
Yeah, why wouldn't I?
I thought we should design that, ask them if we can redesign their driveway so that it only, so it's angles, you can't do that. You can't right turn into it.
There you go. Yeah.
But you're right. I saw that too, and I thought...
That's what's going to start happening.
Admit this is not a straight...
If they're, they'll go around the wall.
It is an unusual, it is an unusual solution.
Yeah.
It's an unusual intersection.
Don't love the median.
The other solution is included, taking that parcel. We actually looked at having another...
Another road.
A road actually cutting through west of the bank. You know, there's, there's other options that are out there for this that included a significant amount of taking. So this...
So I guess the question, why would they do it around about...
State highway.
Yeah. Because they got it down 14. I mean, not down, not down by Michigan, but up here. So keep it as it is, because of roundabout.
I think it's a realistic matter of room, right-of-way, you know?
Right-of-way and room, and it may not have worked. You know, we can get a little more detail on that. We do have the analyses that were done. This is not the most straightforward. The other two are fairly straightforward. As we move through design on all three of them, some of these issues may be addressed, and we may tweak some of these. This is probably the one that demands the most scrutiny, because it does change the nature of Geddes. And you know, I have heard in the past few months, the reuse of that property where the Western Wayne is, and the old DPW building. I wonder if it's not worth talking to Manikin Smith if that is actually going to be redeveloped, looking at that, that effect on traffic. You know, if that's, the idea is the Human Services that's in Cherry Hill would move to this location. I know that's been discussed in the past few months. It's not, none of this is set in stone. This is, you know, the results of our alternatives. It's not something we can't revisit. And Jade, I think that would be a good thing for Manikin Smith to look at. If that's truly where we're going to move Human Services building, that puts another significant traffic generator. You know, we've had quite a bit of discussions on how this would affect the Star Academy. You know, this is not unknown to us, because they certainly have a lot of drop-off traffic coming from both directions. So I'm certainly willing to look at this intersection with the knowledge of the potential Human Services Center. We have the models that exist. I...
But the people at the Human Service, that currently use the Human Services Center, currently drive all the way to the west side of Canton, right? And so this would be, I mean, it may, it may be a little bit further than what the initial way that they could go, but it's not further than going to Cherry Hill Village.
Yeah, my concern isn't the equity component of it. It's fine that they're going to be two miles closer, but their commute is the same. My concern is that they're going to be cutting through the Hans Financial Services Building over and over and over again.
We may be able to mitigate that, so I think that should be something we should consider.
So I think what I'm hearing is, this plan, this layout here isn't everybody's favorite. So, I think, is we can go back and work with Manikin Smith and MDOT, because we've had a lot of conversations with them, and the county for that matter, just to talk about this particular intersection. And as Charles alluded to earlier, they looked at all kinds of options, and this is the one that they felt was appropriate. So without knowing future development, because I think when we started this, I don't know that there was a lot of talk about moving the Human Services back down there, or what use did it personally. or what use it personally would be. So there were some unknowns. So I think we can go back and revisit this one. It's not set in stone, as Charles said. So we can do whatever we want. And what we would do, if everybody would like, is we can come back with one or two alternatives for consideration.
Just a drawing underway. So in New England, they have a lot of these weird corners because they created roads where their cows and this is one was created by the horses, right? The horses draw carriages in 1800. So I think I spoke to you about this bill, about putting another light, a directional light. So you have the light right there on Michigan and Sheldon, and putting another light right at Sheldon and Geddes there, which directs traffic to turn and directs traffic to this. Of course, I think we have to connect with the light on Michigan so it's tied directly. But just by putting a light there, and that's at New England, they have these lights that'll say, U-turn right now. Okay, now through traffic, go. And it's all red light, lights speaking to the turn. And this would be a perfect corner for moving into meeting or anything. Just putting up a real smart light there.
Right, and you could keep, you could honestly keep Geddes the exact same way if you just put a light there.
You wouldn't have anybody, you wouldn't have room to stack people from the south. You have a very, very short distance from Michigan Avenue to Geddes. I think we can certainly look at this intersection. If that, if that human services center does move there, I think that's a pretty big traffic impact.
And the other, the other piece of this is, you know, this has always been a very interesting intersection that everyone's talked about and said it's dangerous and would like to see changes. So that's why it made it to its list. If there's no desire to move forward and everybody likes the way that it is, we don't
The intersection sucks.
It does suck. I don't know who did
If I get to your question, I'm just reading some of this report about the roundabout. They did look at it and it was, it said that the 2045 SEMCOG traffic volume forecast expects the US-12 and Sheldon Road intersection to handle over 54,000 vehicles per day, which exceeds the maximum surface volume for a two-lane roundabout, which is about, which is less than 45,000 vehicles per day.
Gotcha.
So that's, if you put a roundabout there, you're just going to have worse traffic essentially, eventually.
You have the big van issue.
Yeah.
Well, think about the light, the smart light. I'll send you some pictures. Because New England has very strange intersections and they use lights to move people through.
You're also not allowed to turn left in New Jersey, so.
They're on to something.
They do it anyway.
Okay, so we'll go back to the drawing board on that one.
Go all the way back.
So board and back.
Oh, you're trying to get the last couple of slides?
Yeah, I was trying there. So we don't have any hard dollars on Salt Stenon Ridge. I don't know if, I can speak to this one, but we were going to, we put this one on hold because the county just put in the light down there and they are not interested in participating in any new project at that intersection at this point. And they would be a key component to funding a portion of this. Because that, the light just got activated, not even
November, October.
Five months, yeah, four months ago. So not that it's not ready to go and we can't do it, but it's not one that we actually have pricing for design or construction right now. But we just wanted to update everybody that that's one we're keeping on the radar to come back and continue to talk about with the county. I think we talked about it the last quarterly meeting we had with the county and they said, we're not doing it. We're not interested right now. We just committed $600,000 for the light and we got that, which
Yeah.
Oh, oh yeah, years and years ago? So so the last page is, you know, Bill touched on the timing a little bit, but I guess the most important part is us talking about the budget. We would like to propose to bring the design costs before, this would all come out of the road mileage dollars. But all of the design costs for final design on these, we'd like to bring forward so we have the designs and they're ready to go and that we can actually budget them accordingly in the five-year plan for the road projects moving forward. And I think we decided in 2025 would be the earliest that we probably could get one of these for construction, but we could start that design process. Obviously, with our discussion on Sheldon, US-12 and Geddes, we would probably not bring that forward for design right now unless I'm missing something. Because we probably want to go back and talk to MDOT and talk to the county to see what, that may look a little different. Clearly, if we have a new design, it's going to be a different cost.
If we award the design but change our approach, then we're not really missing a beat as far as the work goes. I mean, whatever they think, you know?
So we've done our best to estimate construction costs. Manikin Smith has assisted us with that, but we do have hard design costs here and then estimated construction costs that we could plan accordingly.
Roundabouts are, they've got that special program with SEMCOG that is funded. They want those roundabouts through Michigan, so they, we can get that from the SEMCOG.
Yes, so, and as we work through this process, we can go out and look for all of those funding and grant opportunities, for sure.
Good night. We had a very successful year last year when it came to revenues into the roads fund. Is there a plan for what to do with those either unused or excess funds that came in?
Well, they'll be in the road fund. I will say, it's not a topic for tonight. But I mean, it's not part of what I was planning to talk about, but we can. Hagerty Road, when we get to Hagerty Road and the Ford Road project, is probably going to come in significantly over budget. So once we get that final design and get that cost, MDOT is going to be letting that project out in 2024, so we still have a little ways to go with that. The way Hagerty's agreement is, we, as the township, have to pick up that extra construction cost. So one of my proposals would be during the budget presentation on the 21st of, on the 21st of March for all of you, was to earmark those dollars in the road fund until that project has been letted and we know the actual hardcore, hard budget. So, or a portion of it. It doesn't have to be all of it, but that was going to be a recommendation to bring forward. But we do have quite a bit of money in the roads fund that we could apply to any or all of these projects or anything else that you all wanted to.
We are going to be updating the five-year plan and the tables, which we did last year, but we want to put in the additional commitment potentially for Hagerty, which is currently estimated at about eight and a half million on the Hagerty piece of the boulevard. We have a commitment from the county through federal aid for about three million plus on that. So there will be a significant amount that ultimately we will have to bear. These projects, I think in the current five-year plan, I think in '25 I have a million for a roundabout unspecified. So I think we can work through that five-year plan with some of this information and with better information on the Hagerty piece, thinking we may have that commitment for Hagerty in '25. We may have a significant commitment.
Yeah, and just to note, our agreement with MDOT does not, we do not have to fund that upfront. So I've never seen an agreement like this with MDOT before. But if they will upfront the construction, the project will come to completion, if we end up owing another $5 million towards it, we don't have to pay it upfront. We could work that into our road projects and continue on, you know, our, because right now we're setting aside a million dollars a year that's going towards the MDOT project or Ford Road project. We could just keep that going for another five years to make up that difference, so.
Oh, okay.
That's pretty unique for this agreement.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
This gives a lot of extra things we need to sort of work into that five-year plan. But it's better now that we're closer to the boulevard, so we have some more real costs on that. It's sort of a moving target, but we know what those numbers are roughly, what we're going to have to come up with.
I guess my fear with these three intersection projects is the longer we wait, the more expensive they're going to be. So, I mean, I understand 2025 is probably the soonest, but I would want to see if we could do it not much further down the road than then.
So we're also managing, you know, contending with the other road projects we have planned.
Yeah.
We're trying to work on those and
And the unknown county projects that we don't know yet.
Ford and Beck is maybe, if not urgent is the right word, but we'd want to get that done before anything starts construction-wise on Ford Road, obviously. And it's kind of the most, pretty straightforward, construction-wise.
Yeah, there is a long wait there.
You're right about that.
There's that issue with the size of the right of way.
Oh, that
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're going to look like they're entering, lots of traffic.
Alternative three.
Yeah. One So one question I have about, from a cost estimate is, so you've got internally a strategy around setting aside a million for the Ford Road Boulevard. You've got the potential cost overages for Hagerty, but that we might not have to worry about because we've, we had the reimbursements for the Cherry Hill or for the Canton Center road piece. We have our local roads program, like the neighborhood roads program, that we've, that we're setting aside a certain amount of money. And then we have the, our major roads program. So in that ratio or in those formulas, there is no formula for intersections. So I guess my question is, are we borrowing from those projects in future years to do these or?
These are considered under the major road program. And in the five-year plan currently, I show, I think in '25 and '26, just a placeholder of a million intersection, unknown. So these would, our thought is they would fall under the major road program.
I think that was after, we had come up with the five-year road plan and I think after the strategy session that you guys had and intersections became a priority, we updated that five-year plan as we do every year. And I believe starting in '24, I don't think it was in '23, but in '24 we've allocated dollars for intersections already as part of the major road projects. So we still, and I can send that back out to everybody.
Yeah.
It's on the website as well.
One of the things, when we did this, when Spalding did the analysis of, you know, the initial analysis of kind of what the impact would be to Canton Roads and our Pacer ratings if we, if we did the program, which we ended up doing. There was an interesting kind of inflection point in their math where at year seven of the roads program, they anticipated that, you know, X, you know, the average Pacer rating on major roads would be X. And at that point, you get into a really sweet spot where the cost of maintaining your major roads becomes pretty minimal because they're in good, good shape. And good roads are easy to keep good, you know? So my question is, when we, when we altered our plan to do intersections, did we push out that date of hitting that Pacer rating on our major roads for getting them into good condition?
There's kind of two parts to that. There was that discussion of the whole 20 years. What do we need 20 years for?
Correct.
Versus 10. And there was an inflection point somewhere between seven and 10 where we would get to a point where we would have, I don't remember when we had the study sessions, it was more of a freedom because we had fixed so many roads. The other thing that has occurred is the county has actually fixed all of Cherry Hill, Canton Center to Hagerty. Beck was redone and the $5 million of reimbursement for Canton Center really gives a significant boost to that. So I think it's appropriate that these can fit in to the major roads. I think that inflection point is probably exactly where it is.
Okay.
You know, the same seven to 10 years out, which is just a few years away. We've fixed a lot of roads and the county has actually fixed a lot of roads. So as we redo this five-year plan, it's got a lot more moving pieces. And with these types of pieces, I, I'm pretty confident we can get one or two of these done in the next few years. I think Sheldon and Geddes is certainly one that needs a little more discussion, especially given the potential to move the human services. So I think we are going to get to that point where we have a little more freedom. We're also looking at going back and doing preventative maintenance now on existing roads, keeping the good roads good. But I think that the reimbursements for Canton Center actually really advances our program and puts us where we expected to be at year 10 and probably have funding available. The other big piece is where how do we fund the rest of Hagerty? That's that, that's that big piece that we have out there, we're committed to.
Hagerty.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's almost like we moved forward, but then we moved it back with the additional funding that's been obtained.
So what is the expected, what, you know, you know, there is going to be a more detailed design happening, but is there a timeline that you have in mind for at least the other two intersections, Beck and Ford and Sheldon and Palmer?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at what we've been talking about, we would like to have them designed, one constructed in '25 and possibly one in '26, just depending on how the other projects rolled out. So we could get these done. I wouldn't try and tackle them both in the same construction year, in addition to other road projects, so.
I have a question about the local roads program. I know that we had a conversation about as we got further along in the program, there would be fewer subdivisions participating and able to participate. Have we gotten to that point yet? And what are we thinking about doing with the money that's set aside for the local roads program if we don't have enough participation from HOAs?
I can tell you for, you know, '23, construction will be underway soon. 2024 and 2025, we have nearly 20 subdivisions participating in each year. A lot of those are repeat customers, which is good. They're realizing the benefits. I recently was working with Amy in Communications about, you know, getting into Focus specifically like, hey, we have this program, simple match. '26 has two or three in it right now that have come in since '25 sort of filled up. So we're just kind of working on that right now. You know, we haven't, yeah, we haven't gotten our arms around what to do if '26 and beyond, we don't have enough subdivisions. Yeah, we talk about it because obviously our current setup is with a required match and I'm sure it'll ultimately be something we ask, we bring to you guys to say, okay, well, what do we do now? No one's matching and we have all this money. Where do we send it and how do we handle it? I mean, yeah, it's definitely a good question. Right now, we're plenty busy with it, which is good.
Well, I know what you see, sometimes I say this so loud, is like in my subdivision, they're only able to do a piece at a time. So while they have a long road, every year they're only doing this much.
But it's great.
So, but I think that's going to take you out farther.
Yeah, and that's, like I said, a lot of them are repeat because we, from the beginning, we tried to explain to them like, hey, do this part of the match, you'll get your highest, you know, return. And you could just do a few projects a year and they kind of at first would, I want it all done now. And we're like, well, I understand that, but, you know, I mean, some of you were on emails with River Park, Sheldon and Palmer. They were like, wow, we just want to do an SAD. And I'm like, well, you're paying like 120% of the cost versus 20% of the cost. Are you sure? Kind of, they kind of backed off of it, but, and now they're actually, in '23, they have a project going and they're it's a fantastic program. I mean, it's, the ones that are participating realize how great it is for them. All they have to do is write a check and tell me what they want and they're done. I mean
We were actually just talking about this today because these HOAs that are coming back year after year, this will be the third full, fourth full year of the local program. They know the routine now. They know the program. They know Charles. Charles kind of leads the local road piece of it. And it's, we've coordinated our own maintenance work in those subdivisions as well. So these HOAs are taking advantage of it and it's working very well.
One thing I, one thing I would still, we've talked about that I would like to see happen is trying to continue to reach out to these very old subdivisions that don't have HOAs. And let people understand that, you know, our minimum match is $2,000. I mean, a couple of houses ideally could come up with that if they wanted to just fix the road in front of their home. They don't have to be in an HOA. And we've always tried to stress it. It was, resident groups can participate. So I think in the future, I'd like to see, you know, us reach them more, you know, we do what we can. We hear the focus. Everyone reads it, so it's in the focus.
That was one of my big worries is, you know, when we were passing it, what happens in six, seven years when the people who have the funding are done? And the other thing we've seen is we've seen small groups. I'll tell you what, with the HOAs, when the HOA sits down and looks at their road network, they're not prioritizing the cul-de-sacs, as an example.
Right, right.
We're starting to see those come in. We're starting to see those come in, five people around a cul-de-sac, each putting in $500 fixing their cul-de-sac. You know, that's not really in the focus, it's not something that we anticipated, but it's possible. I, I, I think the word is spreading. I know we, we get, they seem to come in every month. So, maybe how we change our communications on that, I mean, Summer, I'd like to have that program go the whole 20 years.
Yeah.
And get, and get everyone, Holiday Park, you know, although Holiday Park is in great shape, they're not, they're not participating. Many of the older subdivisions on the east side who don't have established homeowner associations, that's what we really run into, is they don't have an association that can assess and come up with the funds. But some of them are working around it. Some of them are passing the hat. We do have some of the subdivisions and the cul-de-sacs was just five people. So, we didn't expect that. I think it's kind of a moving target, but we're certainly filling up the years. I think, you know, that might be a discussion point for future citizens groups too.
Yeah.
How we, how we get that word out.
Maybe, yeah.
I would like to see Sunflower Village come, come to the table a little bit more and participate a little harder too, but.
And we have the largest.
Elephant in the room.
You know, that really have 15 plus miles of roads. That's a, they're a much larger than anyone else.
Well, I think the problem with Sunflowers, you have everyone kick in, but it's only gonna do such.
Right.
A tiny part of the subdivision and people are like, I don't drive through there.
Well, that's, that's our problem. We were talking about Swanmere earlier today.
Yeah.
They told these guys, they said, we got six weeks till we get our first complaint on Swanmere. And it's a $2 million fix for that, that area. So, it's strategizing, how do we accomplish that without looking like we're giving too much money to one subdivision when that's not their priority? So, it's, I guess, what is it, 1,592 homes, is that what it is?
1,572.
Seventy-two, sorry.
That's right. It's a lot. The largest sub in the state. And then you have the one over by Lots and Palmer who also have ASR. And they've been plowing through the program of Brookside Five. We worked with them in 2015 and they've been in the program each year and they're plowing through 200,000 a year.
Glenn Gary also.
And Glenn Gary, they were the other bad ASR where we've been able to take out most of their ASR within a three-year program. Swanmere is bigger than all of them because it's such a, I mean, it's, I don't recall if it's quite a mile, but it's, it's the largest, it's the last frontier as far as those bad ASR sites. But I do look at Brookside Five who have been diligently doing 200,000 each year. You know, they're working through their sub and they're fairly large, they have certainly more than 100 people. Sunflowers, yeah, that's, I guess, the elephant in the room, they're, they're large. They have over 15 miles of road, I believe, in Sun, in Sunflowers.
It's not all bad.
When you're applying 200,000 to that size of a network, you know.
The other thing we stress is if, even if you do have an established HOA, it doesn't have to come from the HOA. You could still have a resident group participate.
Right.
So, if everyone on Swanmere wanted to just tackle it themselves, they could, independent of the homeowner association.
Right.
The $2 million.
Right.
And they tried, they tried SADs in Swanmere.
And they could tackle it piece by piece the same way everyone else does.
That's true.
Just to take some cooperation.
I'll tell you, not about the local roads program in general, what about our study session topic tonight? I was nervous that these numbers would be substantially higher than they currently are, so I'm actually pleasantly surprised. Just because I remember what we were spending in 13 when we were, when we had the intersection improvement program. And I, I remember that they were setting aside like a million dollars.
Yes.
Like, oh, it's a million dollar, and the, 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 the label on some of these were that's a million dollar intersection. So, to see Sheldon Palmer come in with a roundabout at 1.54 million for hard, you know, for estimated construction costs and then the design, I'm just like, man, given the inflationary pressures that we've seen on everything that we've got, given, given everything that kind of was baked in here, this is really workable and really manageable. So, I was very surprised to see these numbers. I expected, I expected a little bit more than this. And who knows, right? It can always go up, but.
Any other questions about these? So, you had an update on Ford Road Boulevard, do you want to just give that update today to the board, just to talk about what's going on in that one?
Sure. Can I ask a clarifying question on this?
Sure.
What do you guys see as the next steps on this?
Oh, on this one, yeah.
Do you guys want, are you doing a workshop on this and then coming back?
Oh, yeah. We can add it to the seventh.
RBA is ready.
Our RBA is ready to go. So, for design only of these three, but we can adjust that, amend it and, so I just, whenever, I guess you guys have the workshop session.
The seventh, yeah, Joe Scott.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, the board could either workshop this or make a decision tonight if you feel like you're ready to move forward. But we can add it to the workshop as well.
Yeah, that's a workshop.
Shall we hold off on Sheldon and Geddes right now and we can, we can talk to Manik and Smith about those alternatives? I think that's where we are.
Wait.
Yes.
You're, you're gonna workshop it?
Yes, I mean, do you still want to talk to Manik and Smith about some of the other questions?
Oh, yeah, we're still talking.
Yeah, I think Sheldon Geddes will hold on that and we'll look at some more alternatives. The other two.
They're not bringing it forward.
Yeah, we're not bringing it forward.
With this RBA, with this.
We're comfortable with those designs for Beck, Ford and Sheldon Palmer.
And when we, when we award the design, we're not bound to these designs, right? We just want to get them moving on something. Because to do all three of these, like sort of at the same time, it's gonna take them almost a year to design them. So, if we wait, you know, we lose time that way.
Just a couple of weeks. What were you gonna say, Summer?
Or, yeah.
No, I mean, I think the two that everyone's comfortable with, I'm fine with doing the, getting the design work started at least.
Sheldon and Palmer and Ford and Beck, you mean?
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm, personally, I'm not opposed to starting the design work on the third one either, but I don't know, I don't know if we need to workshop it. If you all feel like we do, I'm fine with that, but.
Kate, wanna workshop that?
My only concern is that we don't have all the trustees here.
Well, I don't know if Stephen will be back on the seventh.
Ah. Do you wanna, do you wanna follow up with Stephen to see how he feels?
I can. Does anyone else want to discuss this further? I mean, workshop it in the next meeting or?
I mean, I'm comfortable with what they presented, other than you were gonna go back on the Geddes one.
My opinion is that I am comfortable with the two that we talked about. I would still have, want to use, to have a conversation with MDOT and like, you know, do we have to invest again in design? Is in further detailed discussion on the Sheldon US 12 intersection, the other two, I'm perfectly fine with going ahead with the design.
Yeah, I feel the same. I just, I think it's worth a call into Stephen also.
Yeah. One of the things we had talked about when we were trying to figure out the workshop on the board's study session and Stephen and Summer, you know, we were all talking about how getting, getting complete attendance to meetings is going to be very challenging in 2023 because of Summer's travel schedule and Stephen's and mine. And, so, and Tanya. So, that will be interesting to see kind of how that works out. But, yeah, I mean, I just don't know that there'd be much value in having another meeting, for me anyway, I don't think there'd be much value in having an entire meeting dedicated to this again. Because we beat this thing up pretty good.
I think the workshop will have many topics, this would just be one of them. Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, whatever.
Yeah, many of them, not just this.
Add it to the hopper.
I mean, when are, when would, when would the proposed workshop be?
March 7th.
Isn't March 7th the board's regular vote meeting?
No, it's a study session meeting.
That's the one we're going over the board goals. Do we want to add agenda items to that meeting, given how expeditious we moved through the agenda on, at the board retreat?
I think we have a couple, we should. I mean, if anyone's okay, I mean, I think Stephen agreed that if he can't make it, he can't make it also, but I could contact him tonight. Yeah, I'll follow up with him tonight.
Okay, I'll wait then. One of the things that Charles brought up too is part of what the original award was for Manik and Smith was some feasibility dollars for Salt Ridge and Denton. And because that's kind of been on hold because of the light going in, because all of this was changed, there is some more feasibility dollars. So, when we go back, you know, the design for Sheldon and Michigan Avenue and Geddes, we still have dollars to play with that to run through some different scenarios. So, we can accomplish all of that and, and then still get these designed, probably close to these budgets.
You're more comfortable awarding design for the two that were okay and then at the same time, we could ask them to just do some more feasibility study on Sheldon and Geddes. We can do it that way as well. It saves you from adding it to your agenda for your workshop special.
Yeah, I can let you guys know tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Board Road?
Sure.
What'd you guys, what'd you find out today?
So, we had our meeting with MDOT today. As, I don't, not sure if everybody knows, but Garetti has taken a new position with MDOT, she's been promoted. She's always been a very big supporter of Canton and she's been really, really good to work with, which is hard to find at that level. But I'm happy to say that Adam, and I won't try and pronounce his last name because I can, that's.
Penzen Stadler.
That's it.
Penzen Stadler.
He has been promoted to her position, who he was the project manager for the Ford Road project and he is actually just as easy to, to work with. So, we're real happy that he actually got that position. So, he held the meeting today. The majority of our time was actually spent talking about right of way. Letters went out to all of the affected parcels, various levels of acquisition and, and needs were sent out and they've gotten no resistance. The only call that they've actually received was from the owners of TGI Fridays, which I asked Patrick today because that building is actually gonna, that site is gonna be something different. It's gonna be a Kane's Chicken. I'm not sure if I just told something I wasn't supposed to, but it's okay. So, they're going through the process now, but that building's actually gonna be demolished and they're gonna build a new building. So, we're gonna make sure that we keep them in touch with the new owners for the site plan. Because it's definitely, there is gonna be some, a loon there and a proposed loon. I should say, all this is draft at this point until they actually acquire everything that they need. So, but other than that, Land Matters is communicating with the, the owners, sending out, they kind of showed us some examples that they're sending out and they've gotten no, no, no resistance yet, but they haven't started talking dollars. So, time will tell.
No resistance yet, that's good.
Yeah. They're still planning on letting this project in 2024 and starting in 2025 with the Hagerty Road section. And then DPW has been out there helping, they did some utility work for, for MDOT. And then they had some questions for Amy in regards to the DDA and I'm not exactly sure what those questions were, but she's already responded back to them while we were on the call. So, other than that, it was a pretty short meeting, but things are moving along behind the scenes with the real estate folks. And after that's done, we'll have more of the solidified design as opposed to just what we have to call the draft design right now because they're still working with all the property owners.
And we're trying to get DTE into the discussions also because MDOT had kind of said to us, you know, if you want to look at extra electric.
Yeah, Victor, Victor was on the call today as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Any questions?
That's a big, it was a quick meeting, it wasn't very long.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, they did say they're doing a lot of appraisals now.
Yep.
Title work and they'll.
Title work's coming in.
They'll be making offers, I presume, in the spring.
Sounds like it.
That's their schedule.
Can I make a suggestion that maybe an update on the Ford Road project go out to folks on the Planning Commission? Because one of the things that I hear from Planning Commissioner is, we don't know if this is gonna happen in our lifetimes, so.
I can actually, I can come to the next Planning Commission meeting and, and actually present it, that's fine.
Okay.
Sure.
That would be great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on Ford? Then Joe had suggested maybe, we don't, we still don't know Wayne County's plan for roads for 23, do we?
The, the, the local roads that they do? We, we know they're doing Hanen north of Van Born is, is the federal aid project, that's on our web now. We don't have their local roads where they come and mill and replace. We generally try to get that as soon as we can, but they don't produce it usually till the spring.
So, what if we have, Joe was suggesting maybe we have a call with them, like, did you say, you mean like a public call, you want to talk about it, Joe?
Yeah, maybe like a Teletown Hall meeting jointly with Wayne County, just to kind of get out ahead of our roads projects for 2023 with residents. So, they kind of know what's coming and can ask questions and give feedback and, you know, instead of us kind of being in a reactive position perpetually on road stuff, we can be a little more proactive and, and holding a forum for residents and businesses to give feedback on.
We have a quarterly meeting typically around this time. We may want to prep that with the county. We, we certainly have our projects lined up, Lots, Lily, Sheldon next year. We were already looking at designs for, for 24 on, on pieces of Geddes and Beck, which is all in our plan. But, yeah, we still don't really have a good handle on the county's program for next year or this year.
So, maybe we ask, like you said, Melissa to kind of lead that effort and.
Yeah, I mean, I think if Wayne County's already done something like this in the past, it just makes sense to maybe partner with them on, on an effort like this.
Okay. Send a note to Melissa. Also, didn't we do Lily Road from Ford, I'm sorry, from, yeah, Ford down to Cherry Hill?
Not all the way.
I know, we did a lot of.
No, we did portions of that the first year in 19.
That was a good program, project.
Yeah, because that road's a little rough now.
And there are still portions, we did not hit the entire road.
Yeah.
And it looks like the portions even that we did, we might need some.
As, as we are looking at the five-year plan, some, some of the things we've talked about internally is, is adding some of those smaller projects. If you remember in 19, we did about 12 different projects, some were only a quarter mile. So, we've, since then, done generally mile stretches. So, we do want to incorporate some of those smaller areas and that's a targeted area.
Going back and looking at the projects that we've done already, the preventative maintenance is gonna be a key part of the program. So.
Nice.
Okay.
Otherwise, there's the problem with changing that.
Right.
Did we find the quarterly meeting with Wayne County yet? Okay. We sent them notes, I think we put the next meeting day, but maybe it's not on the calendar.
Did they set another meeting day? I haven't heard much from them.
I think we planned it at the last one.
Yeah.
So, what does, what are our major road projects this year?
We're doing Lots Road from US 12 to Palmer, which will enter, which will intersect with the improvement at Lots and Palmer. The county is gonna be putting in a new signal, so we're working with them to get that entire piece done. Lily Road from US 12 to Palmer is, is also the other big project for this year. And then we added, at the end of last year, we added Sheldon north of Warren, so that two-lane stretch that runs up to the party store right there. That was, that was one we, we knew we could add. So, we have those three, three segments that are in, they're on our website and in the five-year plan currently.
Okay.
We'll be having another quarterly meeting because we'll have our citizens' advisory group, the Department of May, when that happens.
So, you guys are on that?
And then from there, we'll take the counts from there and go back to the board and go over the next year's plan and any sort of the updates to the five-year plan to extend it out to 2028. And then zeroing in on those future projects.
Don't forget to invite me this time, Bill.
It was done on purpose.
Did I not invite you?
I was invited, you were.
You did not invite me last time, Bill.
Sorry. I think we had a lot of people, we were all.
I'm sure it was a lively, it was probably a very productive meeting.
Was it last May?
I do remember that.
Any other questions? No comments? Let me see, any staff comments on anything else? Board comments on anything? So, today, as you know, we had an incident, you know, where some of our firemen and police went to the hospital for carbon monoxide, but they're all safe now. I mean, they're, they were released earlier in the day. Some more to come on that investigation. Anything else? What is this week?